Good evening and welcome to our September meeting. I call this meeting of the Bastrop Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please stand and join me in the pledge and then we'll have an opening prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing. Pastor Bernie Jackson is here from the Ministry Alliance. We'd like her to come forward.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come before you tonight, Lord, thanking you for another school year. We're asking, Lord God, that you would provide a safe and productive year of education for our children. Father, we're calling on you for this board and administration, God, to be able to provide that education for the kids free of conflict and confusion. We ask, Lord, that you would bless every entity that has something to do with our children, keeping them safe and preparing them, God, for the life ahead. We ask your special blessing upon this district, Lord, that you would watch over it, provide for it, and allow the growth to take place, Father, that our children will learn and be productive, God, in the life ahead. Bless all that are concerned, in the name of Jesus, God, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bernie. Thank you. Thank you very much. This time, I'd like to ask Jackson to come forward, please. I'm gonna try the last name. Gabaldon. Did I get it right? Okay. He's... A little bit about Jackson before we get started. He's a second grader at Lost Pines Elementary. He's gonna speak to the board on honesty. A little bit about Jackson is he enjoys playing with cats. He likes baseball, basketball, soccer. His favorite school subject is science. He has four siblings and one on the way. And his parents are Tabitha and Russell Ash. Looks like they're here to join him. So, take it away, Jackson.
Hello, my name's Jackson Gabaldon. Thank you for letting me speak about honesty. Thomas Jefferson said that honesty is the first chapter in the Book of Wisdom. Honesty is telling the truth. An example of being honest is returning something that someone lost to the officer or to the person. An honest person does not lie, cheat, or steal. An honest person is trustworthy, fair, and loyal. Honesty is staying true to yourself and not falling to the crowd when they're doing something wrong, like bowling. Honesty is also admitting when you do something wrong. Honesty helps you make friends. That is what makes someone an honest person.
Fantastic.
Great job.
Thank you very much, Jackson. Representing Lost Pines. Now, I'll turn it over to Steve for a little recognition.
Thank you. You know, we usually have our students from the Student Advisory Council. I'll be meeting with them for the first time next week. And then we'll get some students to the next board meeting starting in October. And you have that each month. But we do have some very special recognition this evening. We enjoy it when we get to recognize our students, and we certainly enjoy it when we get to recognize our staff. We get to do that in a big way tonight. We were informed the other day, and we've been celebrating along the way with this principal. The fact that she has been named by the Texas Association of Secondary School Principals, a statewide organization that helps with training and lobbying efforts and everything else for secondary school principals across the entire state. They named as Region 13 Middle School Principal of the Year for the region Sam McKenzie at Bastrop Middle.
Get my picture taken?
Yeah.
Then we wanna hear how you did it.
We were about to give a speech. We don't wanna...
Speech.
I just wanna thank you all. It really is a reflection of the campus and the kids and the teachers and I think the journey we've been on at Bastrop Middle School and the support, the administrators, school board, every principal here works hard. So, for me to get this honor, I mean, being a principal is very rewarding. We used to just don't get awards for it. It is a great, great honor for all of us, and I appreciate your involvement.
Great job. Fantastic. We will... Congratulations again, Ms. Kenzie. We're gonna move on to Sandra Callahan, our public hearing on proposed tax rate.
Good evening. We're here to conduct the 2014-15 Tax Rate Public Hearing. I have a short presentation. As you know, in October, the board approved the tax rate that would be published and then adopted tonight, so we're here to formalize that. And again, there'll be time for public input. The truth and taxation information, of course, our 2013-14 tax rate was $1.46 with $1.04 for maintenance and operation and $0.42 for debt service. Our rollback rate for 14-15 is $1.50. Our effective tax rate, $1.53. Our proposed 14-15 tax rate is $1.04 for maintenance and operation and $0.40 for debt. Just a little information as far as property values. This, the $2.8 billion is what our certified values came at. If there are still some properties under protest, but those are all taken into consideration. That's about a 7% increase over 2013-14, so that was good news for the district. I always like to show our principal taxpayers, and that that group of top 10 taxpayers make up 16% of our total roll. Just like to keep that in front of you. That stays fairly consistent as far as who those top 10 taxpayers are for the last few years. They have changed around as far as the actual number where they are in the top 10. But that's just good information and good to know that those always pay their taxes, so you can see that if that was... If they didn't, that could be a problem for our budget. And just a total tax rate history, as you can see, the district has always lowers the tax rate when they have the chance. You can see the... When taxes have changed over the years, when we've had the tax rate reduction from the legislative session. Our M&amp;O tax rate, of course, has been $1.04 since the '07-'08 year when that tax rate could be adopted. Debt service tax rate, again, is that we've been fortunate to have our property values continue to increase even after the fires that have allowed us to lower our debt service tax rate. Also, refundings that we've done in the past four or five years have also made that possible for us to be able to lower our debt service tax rate. So, we're proposing a two-cent reduction. Just to show you our debt service budget, that our 13-14 and 14-15 is approved to see that we do have a $6.5 million estimated fund balance in our debt service fund balance at the end of 13-14, which is fairly... You know, it's a good amount to make our... We have to have a certain amount in debt service fund balance. I mentioned that to you during budget time because we have to make our August payments before tax money starts coming in. So, you have to keep a fund balance in your debt service budget. With this 2014-15, because when we approved the budget, we didn't know what the debt rate would be, so there might be an amendment coming in the next couple of months to adjust for that reduction in tax rate. But we should still have a balanced or a little bit of an excess in our fund... in our tax rate. And this just shows in our fund balance. This just shows taxes on various home values compared from 13-14 to 14-15. It's, again, just to show you what the average value is for different... This is required. It's part of the public notice that goes in the paper that was published a couple of weeks ago. So, that's just good information for people to have as a baseline. Again, $1.04 is our total estimated tax... Our proposed tax rate for 14-15, once adopted. I'll be glad to answer any questions from the board or the public at this time. And there is a motion on the agenda for the actual motion to adopt the tax rate. So, there's no questions.
I'd make a motion that this year's proposed tax rate does not exceed the effective tax rate. I move that the board adopt the tax rate of $1.04 for maintenance and operations and .401 for payment of principal and interest on debt for a total rate of $1.441 for the 2014-15 school year.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve... To adopt the tax rate of $1.04 for maintenance and operations and .40 for payment of principal and interest for a total tax rate of $1.441 for the 2014-15 school year. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Sandra. Now, we're gonna move on to our technology update presented by John Corb.
Mr. Murray, Mr. Allen, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to give the annual 2014 Technology Update. Appreciate the opportunity to stand here in front of you and kinda let you guys know where our department is at and what's kinda going on with some of the fund balance items that you guys have approved last year. I'd like to start with our department's mission statement. We try to keep it simple in the technology department. Our goal is to support successful learning instruction for our students. That's what drives everything we do in the department. We do that with our four teams, our instruction team, our operations team, our infrastructure team, and our applications team. They're all... We all work together in order to accomplish that mission statement. This year, we have a primary objective that we've tried to focus on, and that's the transition to a campus-based support model, meaning we're moving away from having individuals here at central office, and we want to utilize our campus-based assets to support our teachers and support our students. A big part of that was the hiring of our instructional technology coordinator this year. It's Emily Bain was the name of the hire that we brought on. And Emily's job is to support lab managers, media specialists, instructional specialists, and campus TIGs. Those are her four main groups that she guides and focuses on at the campus level. So, wanted to talk a little bit about what our campus TIGs do. Our campus TIGs are our technology integration guides. They are the how-to people on the campus. These are teachers that are paid a stipend to provide further support to teachers beyond the school day, beyond their normal duties as a teacher. So, if you need to know how something works, it's the campus TIG that tells your teacher how it works. And of course, Emily provides support for them, direction, make sure that they are providing the trainings that our teacher needs. That's our digital coordinator of instruction. Our library and media specialists, those are our librarians. We've kind of transitioned... We're transitioning them to a media specialist role. With that has come a lot of changes in their job description and their job duties. They play a very important part because our students are bombarded with information on a daily basis. We've got a picture of a kid here sitting in a library, but... And she's on a computer, because that computer holds the entire contents of that library. With all that data, our library and media specialists have a very important job. They have to teach our students how to process that data, how to find the correct information and find what's important, what should be used as far as in their assignments, and what should be disregarded because it's inappropriate. So, library and media specialists, a lot of changes to their job description, a lot of changes to their job duties on the campus. But again, Emily Bain is supporting them, and we've seen a lot of success already. One of the things we did in order to make that process work is we looked at our standards and guidelines for librarians based on a Texas administrative code, and we use that as kind of a basis to form the job responsibilities for our librarians. We graded ourselves on how we were accomplishing those standards, and we moved from there. Another big asset on our campuses is our elementary campuses and intermediate campuses, our lab managers. The district is responsible for providing all students with the technology applications TEACs. These are standards for technology use and using it appropriately in the classroom and in the world around them. And our lab managers are one of our key focus points for providing that instruction. Lab managers are aides that are supported by, again, by Emily Bain, our coordinator, who provides them with curriculum and support in order to teach our students. Finally, we have our instructional specialists. Our instructional specialists, of course, are led by Nancy and Kathy, but we work very closely with them. Emily works very closely with them. Our thought is that if you are an instructional specialist, you also need to understand how technology is integrated in the curriculum. That should be part of your job duties. That should be an expectation. And so, Emily provides them with support as far as more knowledge. Also, we provide them with training so that our instructional specialists are also technology-experienced individuals when it comes to curriculum integration. We also hired another... We did a lot of changing in our department this year, especially on the instructional side. We hired a student information systems analyst. The district has a goal that we are data-driven in our decision-making, and the student information systems analyst does just that. Takes our student data, takes the information that we put in Skyward, that's our student grades, discipline, things like that, Eduforia, all our testing scores, and he filters that. He gets to put that all together in a nicely nice little package that filters down to our campus in a way that can be easily processed by our stakeholders. So, our principals can take that data and then use it to effect instructions. So, our teachers can take that data and use it to help our students. The second of our primary objectives was to ensure the annual refresh of student and teacher devices and school infrastructure. In other words, just support devices and infrastructure in the district so that our kids have the tools they need in order to learn. Our operations team is a big part of that. They... This year, they've brought in and processed 200 teacher machines. So, we've refreshed teacher machines. Our old machines have been exited, and these new machines have replaced them. The CRCA desktops that were part of the fund balance request, they have been brought in, processed, and installed on the CRCA campus. CRCA laptops for our students have been brought in, processed, and provided to the students already, as well as our portals computer for our very important seventh-grade portals classroom at our middle school campuses. They have been brought in, processed, and provided to the campuses to support that vital instruction as we start implementing the House Bill V elements. Infrastructure, the district voice-over IP has been a big project for us over the summer. We had 13 sites that we set out to install voice-over IP telephone on that we already had four sites, so this infrastructure joined with what we already had. We have exactly two more sites that will be turned over tomorrow evening, and we should be wrapping up that voice-over IP implementation. So, it was a very big process. Lot went into it, lot of wiring and switches put in over the summer, lot of extra time by my guys, but we are almost wrapping it up, and we should be done very quickly. Yes, sir?
How's it work? Just follow any cameras from this building here?
Yes. Yes. It's very similar to your normal phone system. What it does is we've kind of consolidated our systems so that they're all the same. We've... It helps us to communicate because we can see our district directory reach out to them. We also have added teacher voicemail lines so that when parents call in, they're not interrupting a class that goes to a teacher voicemail that they can check. So, a lot of positives that came out of this implementation. It's gonna save the district quite a bit of money as far as maintenance and maintaining that as well. Another big project that they completed over the summer was the CRCA infrastructure. We created a whole nother campus. We put in all the wiring and the drops for desktop computers that went in on that campus. And so, that was another big project that infrastructure completed this summer. Our applications team. Our applications team processed over 150 new hires, and when you say it just like that, it sounds so simple, but they've provided each one of our teachers, staff members, paraprofessionals with logins, access to the appropriate accounts, and we've got a ton of them. If you'll look down there on the bottom, there's a list of just some of a few of them that our kids have access to, that our teachers have access to. Those all have to be updated and maintained. In addition to that, they supported our digital textbook adoptions. It's funny, each one of our textbook adoptions has a different platform, it seems like, with a different management piece and a different software and different user access. And our applications team is vital in making sure that our teachers can access that digital content so that they can relay it to their kids. So, it's a big job for them. Additionally, online testing. Our applications team supports our online testing. We are slowly moving to more and more students testing online, and I've kinda give you a bullet list of all the online testing that we are performing over the summer and that we are moving toward performing. Tellpass has been going on for several years. Genesis High School, because of the way they're structured, they do almost all of their testing online. Our summer school this year, we included more of the tests that are usually paper and pencil. We did it online. This is really nice because we get our data back faster. We get information in order to provide interventions back quicker. So, we really want to strive. As we move forward, we've got an October evaluation coming up of our online testing plan. And as we move forward with STAR-A, oral administration is to expand into more and more subjects so that we have more student data taken care of quickly online so that we get that information back and we're able to provide support to our students that need it quicker.
John, can I just stop you a second?
Absolutely.
Is this what the student information system analyst works with? The information that has to do with online testing?
Yes. He works very closely with Camille in order to arrange that, to make sure that they're supported, that we have the right updates on our machines, and that we're ready to go when testing time comes along. In addition, our applications teams also worked with Les on our SureScore program that's gonna support our House Bill V implementation, our portals courses, CATE, and project-based learning and digital portfolios as we move forward. So, they've been doing a lot, and they've been working very hard and making sure that we are backing up all these projects that are going on throughout the district and our departments. The technology team is there to back them up, and I appreciate working with a really good team.
Is this stuff on cloud or is it on our servers here?
We have a mix, actually. We've got some on cloud, some on local servers.
Is there never a way of losing everything?
No, sir. We do have a backup that backs up out at Cedar Creek High School and then one here locally. Our budget, we have four main budget sources. One is local funds, one is the federal E-Rate Program, the instructional materials allotment from the state of Texas, and then, of course, our technology... Our Texas Literacy Initiative. Am I saying that right? That is also a federal funding source, and we've... We use that money very efficiently, I believe, to support our students. I also wanted to note that the district has received preliminary notification that they've been awarded the Technology Lending Program grant. This is a $100,000 grant administered by the Texas Education Agency. This is the second time we've received this award. So, preliminary notification is not a full notification. I just wanna put that out there, but it's very positive that we should receive that grant. So, basically, what I want to point out is that each one of our teams has come up with a set of goals that supports student instruction. And these are on your board packet as well. Every one of our teams has the focus of student... Students being the support or us supporting students. That's our goal. We want successful students, and our four teams are the support for that. I would like to say that a lot of times, technology, tech apps, it isn't tested. The tech apps TEACs, we don't test whether or not a student can navigate the internet safely. We don't test whether or not a student can process information appropriately and just pick the right information. So, a lot of times, it may fall the wayside. But as you can see from our presentation today, it's absolutely vital to the livelihood of our other departments, to the way our district functions and operates. And we do everything we can to support those other departments as we go through this. Looking at different things like the Chamber of Commerce from Austin, the most common jobs in Austin right now, top 10 jobs. Majority of them are technology-based. Jobs coming down the line. We're preparing our students for jobs that don't exist right now. And the skills that we give our students are vitally important for that. So, I'd just like to say it's not always something that's tested, but it's something that's vitally important, something that's absolutely necessary. And I'm very happy to be able to support this district in that process.
You know, this past spring, at the end of the year, I asked you to highlight a broader scope of access for our kids, you know, lifts and filters and whatnot. We're gonna come back this summer, get some teacher input, some other staff input, maybe even some student input. Where are we on that now as we start the school year?
Sorry. And you're referring to the social media adoption and the YouTube adoption. So, our BYOT programs are still in full swing. We asked the administrators to reemphasize that on our campuses, the rules regarding that. With the social media aspect, it's still available to our high school students to view and access, so it's a one-way communication tool right now. So, students can't traditionally, as they would, you know, Facebook their friends and things like that. It's really just if a teacher wants to communicate using that medium, students can access it and view it. That is still in effect. We got a lot of great feedback from that. Students, very positive in that regard. Teachers, very much so as well. They like the ability to access that tool and use it to communicate with our kids because that's the way that our students are moving. I will say in regards to the YouTube application, we are still modifying and tweaking it. YouTube.edu is not as open as we would like to have been in regards to our... We're finding it difficult for us to put videos in YouTube.edu for our students to access. Last year, we opened up YouTube.edu, which is kind of a YouTube, but a safe YouTube. It's a protected YouTube. It doesn't have access to all the inappropriate videos that you wouldn't want your students to see. But what we're finding is teachers are finding things outside of that approved YouTube list that they want put in, and we're still working through that process of how to get those teachers' access to those videos as quickly as possible. Are there any other questions?
Could you talk just a little bit more about the librarians and to the media specialists about how that changes their role in the planning process with the...
about how that changes their role in the planning process with the teachers and implementation?
Absolutely. So what we've done is we've tried to get our librarians integrated into the PLCs a little bit more, communicating with the teachers. One of their big jobs is research and information fluency, so making sure that our students can process the information that's coming into them, the large amount of information that they're exposed to, that they do it appropriately. And they are working with, again, with Emily Bain, our coordinator, to get in the PLCs, integrate into the curriculum, and find ways to support the curriculum with our teachers. Process is a little different on each campus. Schedules are different for each campus. And so, but we are finding time for each one of them to access those PLCs and work with our teachers a lot closer.
Do the kids do still use books occasionally, right?
Kids still use books, absolutely.
John, is that online testing, like take at Genesis? Is that done on the campus?
Yes.
It's not something that's done at their house or place?
No, sir. We have to make sure that they're the appropriate settings on the machine in order to support that. Any other questions? Thank you for the opportunity, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, John. Thank you very much. Henry? Demographics.
Mr. Murray, Mr. President, members of the board. We have Trent Smith with us tonight from Templeton Demographics to bring us an update on our State of the Union, I suppose.
All right, Mr. Ford, what's the trick?
It's down there.
Oh, one finger.
What was your presentation?
Back and forth. All right, you're on.
Good evening, we're President Allen and members of the board, Superintendent Murray. I'd like to thank you guys for this opportunity. Also like to thank Henry Gideon for his support and his team's support as we've put together this demographic study for you guys. Tonight, I'm going to review the Austin area economy along with the Bastrop economy, the housing market here in the Bastrop ISD, and then we're going to touch on the 10-year forecast of the student enrollment. First of all, it is a good time to live in Texas. Texas is number one in job growth. It is also number one in population growth here in the United States. In fact, in the Austin area, the job growth is up 3.3% over the last 12 months. And if you were to rank that within the top MSAs across the country, you'd be number two at 3.3%, just behind the DFW area at 3.4%. Currently, the United States is at 6.5 unemployment rate. Texas is at 5.6. The Austin area is at 4.4, which is down 1.3% from last year. The Bastrop County is at 5.6, which is, matches the state of Texas. That is seven straight years that the state of Texas has a unemployment rate below the national average. The Texas Oil and Gas Rig Count is up 6%. The average home price in the Austin area is up 8%. And we just learned earlier that the home values here in Bastrop are up 7%. The existing home inventory is down 3%. And you'll see, as that continues to drop down, that there's a relationship there. As that inventory tightens, that average home price is going to continue to rise. And we're going to see a couple more years of that as we go forward.
Do you think that percentage is going to lower over the next year or maintain the same?
It's starting to level out slightly, but it's not going to lower a whole lot, especially in the Austin area. The main driver of the economy here in Texas has been the oil industry. And Texas is now home to two of the largest, or the two largest, oil reserves in the United States, the Permian Basin and the Eagle Ford Shale, which tails up pretty close to you guys here on the edges. We are now the number-one producer of oil in the world. We've surpassed Saudi Arabia and Russia to take over that role. Texas is actually responsible for 36% of that production, making us the top state in the union for oil production. Here in Austin, or the Austin area, Apple is adding on a $300 million campus to their existing facilities. They're going to, in the next 10 years, they're in the process of hiring 3,600 new programmers, new employees. It's going to double their presence here and make Austin one of the largest employer, Apple one of the largest bases of operation for Apple. IBM is also following suit. They're adding another 900 jobs for developers through 2018. And they will be, that makes them the fifth-largest employer here in the area. They've been in the area for over 30 years. This has definitely been seen as a tech area. Visa is upgrading their area, or their location, as well as expanding their location. They've just put in a $27 million upgrade investment specifically aimed toward their cybersecurity. As we all know, that's been a hot topic lately with Target, with, I believe Home Depot was the latest to fall to that. And they're going to add another 841 jobs through, by 2017. Athena Health is moving their portion, a large portion of their offices here into the Austin area. That's going to add another 600 jobs, as well as $13 million into the Austin area economy. Here in Bastrop, the two most significant developments that have been going on the last 12 months, you've got the building of the academy that is due to open prior to the holiday season. That's going to bring in 125 permanent jobs, as well as that $2.5 million building that is about 6,200 square feet of space. HEB is in the middle of their renovation and addition of 27,000 square feet. That's a $3.85 million addition that they're putting in. And HEB is now the seventh-largest employer in Bastrop County. So what does all that development do? That development brings home starts and brings families to the area. The Austin area, this is a graph of the starts and closes over the last several years. You can see in 2006, where we peaked at that 16,000 rate, that is probably not going to be seen again. That was kind of an inflated housing market, and we paid for it later, and it dropped all the way down below 6,000 in 2011. But since that point, we've seen a nice, steady increase from that moment. And we believe we're going to continue to see that for the next several years. This is a map of the Bastrop ISD that shows the new construction permits that have happened over the last two and a half years, and as well as the fire rebuilds that have been happening here in the area since 2011. As you can see, in the fourth quarter of 2011, there were almost 200 permits for fire rebuilds that has dropped off, you know, as those homes have been rebuilt. This year, I think we're down, through the first quarter or through the second quarter, there's only been about 30 new rebuilds during that time in the county. The rest have all been new home builds that are coming through. This next map shows the new housing permits by elementary zone and by year. As you can see, in 2012, we had just around 200 new permits for new housings, for new houses. 2013 jumped tremendously, about 50% increase over that next year. So we're up right around 300. This year, we're tracking, probably going to be right around or just below that 300 mark. So now we're going to look at a few specific subdivisions that are spurring the growth here in the Bastrop area. The first one is the Colony. The Colony still remains to have over 1,100 future lots. The estimated absorption rate that they're looking at after talking to the builders is they're looking to add, adding another 10 homes this year, 20 next year, and then another 30 the next year, and continuing on on that 30 homes a year pace for some time. They're planning on delivering another 60 lots in 2015 to keep up with the demand that they're seeing there. And that is in Bluebonnet Elementary. Keep in mind, there's still 1,381 undeveloped acres in the subdivision. The next one is Hunter's Crossing. Hunter's Crossing's probably been the fastest and most active subdivision in the district. But the problem is, it only has 72 lots remaining. And so in that development, we're going to see that be built out by the end of 2015. And that is in the Mina Elementary Zone. Now, this isn't the official name of these townhomes, but we do know that they're likely on their way. And the townhomes here, there's going to be about 110 townhomes that are going to be adjacent to Hunter's Crossing. As of yet, we're not exactly sure what the level of townhome. If it is a subsidized or low-income, then that will bring in probably close to 80 students. If it is a Class A, which is probably more likely to be, then that's going to only bring in about 20 to maybe 50 students at the most in that subdivision, I mean, in those townhomes. The next one is the Excess Ranch. Excess Ranch has had a lot of news for a lot of years, but it actually looks like it's getting some traction this year. They're actually in the process of plating two bridges to get into Excess Ranch and get the program started. Those permits are likely to be approved by the end of this year, and the builder is anxious to get started as soon as possible in 2015. Their goal is to get about 50 to 70 homes on the ground by the end of 2016, and then ramping up through 2018 to be selling 250 to 300 homes a year. The next one is a brand-new subdivision that has not even been finally plotted yet, and that is the Bastrop West. Now, the great thing about Bastrop West coming in is that it's going to pick up where the Hunter's Crossing is leaving off. So you're going to see a high-volume builder, you're going to see probably, in this 1,100 home lot, and so that's probably, more than likely, going to take about three years to really have any kind of effect on the district. When it starts, though, it will probably go relatively quickly because it will be a high-volume builder.
You know, the range that they're talking about?
We haven't heard yet, but we're anticipating it's probably going to be something similar to the D.L. Horton program in the Hunter's Crossing. Next slide shows the 10-year forecast. And I want to point out a couple of things in the forecast. One is, there's an extremely large third grade this year of 770 kids. And if you look at that, it is about 40 students above the fourth-grade class and about 40 to, or almost 50, students above the first-grade class. So it makes a significant group that's going to make its way through the enrollment pattern as it goes through the system, it goes through the district. I want you to kind of pay attention to that, it's going to come into play when we talk about the specific campuses in a minute. Also, I want you to look at the freshman class at 974. It's by far your largest class. That is not uncommon, and all districts tend to see this. What happens most of the time is that you have sophomores who fail to get quite enough credits to actually be considered sophomores, and so we call them freshmoors, where you've got a lot of extra students lumped into that ninth-grade class, although they're probably in mostly 10th-grade-level courses. Also, I want you to take a look at the junior class. The junior class is exceptionally large also. And so when you go down to the enrollment increase in 2016, 17, you're seeing that we slow that down a little bit. A lot of that has to do with that exiting class. If you look at that class, there are 100 students more in that junior class than there were last year in last year's junior class. So as that class exits, it's going to take those 100 students with them, and you're going to see a little bit of a slowdown in that number. Another thing that's going to affect that number is also the lack of available lots for housing. Until we see Excess Ranch kick into gear, and until we see the Bastrop West, Village West, kick into gear, we're going to have a little bit of a lull in available lots for building during that time. So overall, we'll see that Bastrop is going to reach over 10,000 in enrollment in the fall of next year, and over 11,000 by the year 2018. We're going to look at, in the next five years, almost a 1,500-student increase during that time, with, in 2019, 20, an enrollment of 11,368. Over 10 years, we're going to see over 3,000 new students here in the district. By that time, we'll have an enrollment somewhere around 13,000, a little over 13,000. And so as you look at these, you'll see kind of the patterns that it takes, and you'll see these, the green squares represent the second-largest class, and the yellow squares represent the largest class over the last five years. Next, we're going to look at by campus. The one year I'd like to point out on this slide, and this is going to show you the enrollment figures by campus over the next 10 years, as well as the history from last year. The one year that I'd like to point out more than any other is the 2019-2020 school year. In that year, in your elementary schools, you're going to have three elementary schools that are hovering right around 800 students. And you're also going to have Mina Elementary that's right there at 700. You're going to be squeezing in on your capacities during that time.
What is that capacity limit? Mina is limited right now to 600, but the other campuses, 748, 750, depending on how it's used, and then at some of the campuses we've added some portables, we've increased
Also, if you'll follow that on down to the intermediate schools, you'll see that in that same year, Bastrop Intermediate hits 800 students as well. And then the following year, Cedar Creek is going to hit that 900-student mark. So if you continue to follow that year down, you'll look at Cedar Creek Middle School. It's at 961 students. What I wanted you to notice, though, was that next class level that is going to go down to 912. That's that large third-grade class that I pointed out in the last slide. It's coming through, and that's when it's going to hit that campus. And as it exits that campus, it's going to slow down that growth there as well. When you only have two grades on a campus, when you have a large class come through, it also, it has a great impact when it comes in, but also has a great impact when it leaves. Following that same line down, you'll notice that Cedar Creek High School also has 1,700 students in that same year. It's going to take two more years for Bastrop to get up to 1,500 students at the high school, at Bastrop High School. So in summary, again, Texas is a great place to live. The Texas economy continues to be the strongest state in the country. The Austin is going to continue to be a job leader in the state, as well as in the country with the energy boom, along with the technology boom. As you noticed, the companies that I talked about earlier all had to do with technology and computer programming. The Bastrop ISD's new home permits have been averaging more than 85 units per quarter over the last four quarters. That is up from previous years. Emile Elementary has the most activity within it, at 41% of the total permits in the district through May of 2014. Bastrop ISD can expect an increase of almost 1,500 students over the next five years with an enrollment of 11,368, and will likely produce more than 13,000 students in the year 2024 and '25. Again, I appreciate your time tonight. If you guys have any questions?
We have access to this report later, Henry, where we could just...
Yes, sir. I'll load it up in WorldStar.
Okay.
Get you, we actually put it in the workbook, correct?
Okay.
It wasn't in there?
It is.
Oh, okay. Do you want some printed copies?
No, no, no.
We can make that happen, too.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
Just for the people here, we showed the growth in these elementaries, it's pretty big numbers. Just for informational, you also have an agenda and a timeline for long-range planning, which will be tying all this information into...
Yeah, that's why we asked the demographer to come in and do, we haven't had an update in a while, and asked him to dig in pretty deep and look at some of the housing trends and some of the developments that are coming online, as you heard him say, that, you know, we see two or three of them coming online even though they haven't been completely plotted yet. But this is the start of us going into a long-range master planning, or master facility planning timeline and look, you know, not only facility, look at facility planning for the future, but looking at facility usage, because you have to look at the buildings you already have. Are you going to use them in the same manner? Are you going to look at changing the way you use them? You can have a certain, and Henry knows this, you have a certain number of seats right now in Bastrop ISD. now in Bastrop ISD, so we have some vacant seats availability. It may just be different in the way that we use them in the future. So, yes, this starts off a process of putting together a facilities planning committee, uh, and looking at this, uh, over a five-to-10-to-15-year, you know, picture.
Okay.
And that took care of number two.
Unless anybody has any questions, a lot of this stuff's information-only. If not, we'll move to the consent agenda.
I will say, if I could, on E1, uh, James, even though it's information-only, I, I do wanna make, insist it's a public meeting, uh, and I'm gonna do this at every turn, uh, that I can. I talked to the principals this morning about that, and they asked me, they said, "Mr. Murray, when you do superintendent's updates, will you mention this quite often?" And I'm gonna mention it, uh, at every board meeting that I can. This morning, our principals and all day long, we're meeting with Janie and all sorts of folks. They were having a webinar about the new, um, accountability standards, the new testing standards. They're changing every year. Uh, we were talking about interventions, we were talking about what we needed to do to move our kids along as far as academic progress. But the bottom line is tied to E1, which is, uh, the campaign that we were just involved with, and Glenn's Sons, uh, were involved in that as well, the Pierce and Brothers, they played at that event, it was a great event. But it's all about school attendance, and, uh, the foundational issue here is, we had to have to have our students in, in each seat each day for us to make a difference with them. And so, it's something that we're gonna hear, from me, we're gonna be hearing it from our principals, from other school leaders. I'd like the board to get behind it as well, and to talk to as many people as you can in all segments of our, uh, community, our district, about the importance of their children being in school every single day. That's gonna make the biggest difference for our students academically. We're gonna do all those other things that you need to do for all of our students as far as interventions and great teaching, and, uh, go through the testing situation that we have to go through, but if they're not in the seat, we can't work with them. So, um, just wanna take this chance, this opportunity during a public meeting to, to talk about that, and I'll talk about it at every turn that I get.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. We'll move on to the consent agenda. If anybody wants to pull anything, we can. If not, we're gonna move on, uh, to entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Second?
Moving second to approve the consent agenda for A through F. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Um, now, we'll move on to just information items. Guess one thing, the board has a packet in front of them for, um, the convention, uh, next Thursday. You have any questions about that? You can see Nancy, she usually takes care of us pretty good. Gets everybody. Anything, Steve, on a future agenda item, uh, as far as, uh, the campus improvement plans, um, sending a workshop of some kind together?
We, uh, we were asked, and, and, and for good reason, to, uh, wait till October to, uh, present the plans. And I know that we've asked our, each principal to get a chance to give a, a vignette, if you will, a, a quick overview of their plans, and so, we'll be getting with you, I'll be getting with you to, to set a, a workshop date. We can, we, you can do the, a separate workshop, or we can do it on the, uh, agenda review, uh, evening of the agenda review. And that way, we wouldn't have to have an extra meeting, we've just, you know, instead of another evening for everybody to be there.
Okay.
So, that might be a, a great time for us to do this during the agenda review.
So, let the board know it's coming, it's just, uh, we didn't wanna do it during a regular board meeting because sometimes it may, uh, take a little longer. Also, on our agenda review, sometimes when the, when the agendas are light, Steve and I'll talk, and we may choose to, um, to not have one, but that doesn't mean we can't. If somebody still wants to ask questions, obviously, uh, Steve's open for that.
Absolutely.
Um, sometimes we kinda respect the schedule on a light agenda and, and, 'cause you gotta help the whole staff and everybody for the cons-, um, for the agenda review. We are gonna have those normally, I'm totally in favor of them, I know Steve, Steve is, uh, but sometimes when they're light, we just kinda make those calls, keeps everybody, uh, from having to come to two meetings. Uh, this was a great example of, um, a pretty light meeting. So, that's, that's why we did that. But, feel free to email me or Steve, and, and if you wanna, if it's burning a hole in you to have one, we, hey, we'll have them. We can, we can do it. So, um, anyway, that's really, truly all I have.
We wanna congratulate Sammy again.
Yep.
Very proud of you, Sammy.
Middle school, uh, for those that just came in, she was, um, recognized by Region 13 as the Middle School Principal of the Year for the region, so it's a pretty big deal. That's all. Carlos Lariano came in, and Johnny Sanders came in, so, uh, we wanted to, uh, recognize that. So, anyway, um, that's all I have.
Move to agenda.
Thank you, guys, for coming. We'll see you next month.